Well, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. We'll start with a prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of serving the community. We pray that you oversee the safety of our village employees and volunteers as they do their jobs. Bless our residents with safe neighborhoods, good jobs, and a great quality of life. We thank you for those people who are invested in the well-being of our community in various manners. We pray for the protection of our military personnel and their families. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to see all of you here tonight. Roll call, please. Baker.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Henley.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Okay. You have in your packet the June 19 regular council meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve those if no one has any additions or corrections.
So move.
All right, second.
Roll call, please. Barth.
Yes.
Henley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
You have the bills in your packet. Are there any questions?
A question, Curtis Kane website design. Is that something that's already been done or going to be doing?
We're in the middle of it. That's, we're halfway through.
Okay.
$3,000 worth of refuse truck tires. Would you put on all the back axles?
I think they replaced all the rears.
Okay.
At what lift station did the pump go at Jeff go to?
Old Street.
What, I don't have a problem with it, but what did we need Savage Clearview Drive for?
That project started some of the, obviously, some of the neighborhood had asked him about doing something with their drainage there in the back. And I said, well, we've got that storm sewer back there, so we just kind of used him for some digging. We supplied the material. He just added some catch bases and some piping to try to drain that whole, call it behind like Margaret Jones's, Handy's Funeral Home parking lot area.
Okay. And if nobody else has anything, I know this group does.
Second.
Roll call, please. Baker.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Edley.
Yes.
Kent, would you like to introduce Casey and explain what he's here for?
Well, let him introduce himself. But this is Casey Wertz, President of Worlors. I know he had talked to the committee before, so they should recognize him. And I just asked him to come tonight so if council had any questions or whatever on their proposed contract or whatever with the village as far as taking over refuse service, he or Michelle will be here to answer those. And I guess depending on those results, then I'll have Troy get with them to hammer out an actual contract and start their meeting. Or if you say tonight, no, you're not interested, then everybody will know that too. You can both go on up or however you want to do it.
Shall we just like hand handles and help him handle his family contract? I'll let her do the speaking.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. We're really excited about the potential opportunity to service the municipality for refuse and recycling services. As mentioned before, there was information sent out regarding service quote for the pricing and then followed up with a committee meeting, which I was on vacation, so Casey handled some questions. My understanding is there are still a few lingering questions that were kind of on the table that hopefully we can clear up tonight. And then from there, based on your decision, we would move forward. So is there anything particular I can address tonight regarding the proposed services?
I think one of the questions we had when we were on the way out the door was the weight of the elderly, the elderly getting it out to the street. And you said there's smaller sizes available?
Sixty gallon carts.
That's good, no, because we have a lot of issues with it as a, no.
I'm assuming that carts are pretty heavy duty. You don't have to worry about launching, they empty them. The wind's going to blow them out on the road and get damaged, so.
Right, the carts basically.
I see a lot of trash cans on the road quite a bit. I don't want, that happened mine, then until I owe $10 for a damaged trash can.
Right. The only time that we actually charge back a resident for a can is if it is deliberately abused or it is lost or stolen. And in that case, we usually file a police report and that goes from there. So we don't just, you know, we're going to maintain the cart. So if it is, you know, got a cracked lid, we'll take care of it. If it's got a broken wheel, we'll take care of it. Are they heavy duty? Yes, they're heavy duty, but you know, things do happen and there are parts of the cart that may or may not go bad, so we would take care of that. By abuse and neglect, we mean like literally abusing and neglecting that can, so.
Here's our machine dump, right?
Correct.
Is that what you're going to use?
Correct.
So that's a pretty heavy duty container.
Yes.
Is there actually a model number on each dumpster in case neighbors go down the road?
There is. There's actually a serial number stamped right on the cart, each cart. Each of those carts will be assigned to the residence unit that will obtain from the village. So in our system, it'll say resident, the address, and then both the cart numbers. So in the event one is lost, stolen, swapped, mistaken, they can call and say, which actually cart is mine and should be here? And we can clear that up for them.
Just to make everything clear, the cart itself holds what about four average size 13 gallon garbage bags? Is that what you were saying or what was?
It's about, it's about three to four 30 gallon bags. It's about 13 kitchen bags. Your 13 gallon?
Well, it's way.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Seven to eight 13 gallon bags. Let me, let me clear that up. If you're using a 30 gallon bag, you can get it roughly three in there. If you're using kitchen bags, you can get about seven to eight, so.
What if somebody has that full and throws out a box and/or another garbage bag? How do you usually handle situations like that?
There are a couple different ways to handle it. In some of our municipalities, what we do is we sell what is called a bag tag, okay? And there would be different outlets around the community that they could obtain those. They could purchase those tags, put the tag on the bag, and we would go ahead and take it. If it's not tagged or it is not, you know, paid for in advance, then we're probably, you know, we are going to leave that. Because we give them a lot of opportunities to take care of it before they put it out to the curb. So the, the pricing that we have quoted you is for one full cart a week with the lid closed, so.
I apologize because I reminded everybody at the last council meeting to bring their information with them and I didn't bring mine.
Oh, that's okay.
Would you like to use mine? I'm looking at Ron's.
You're not the lone ranger there.
Oh, my gosh. So Kent, is, are, is yard waste allowed in those?
Yard waste is not allowed. You cannot take that per EPA regulations.
Okay.
They want to drive all of that to a compost site.
You know what? I got that one. I was looking at that one. Sorry. Okay.
So if there's a, do we have a lot of triplexes or anything like that, quadplexes here in Pittsville?
Yes.
So if there's a triplex, you guys don't pick up their trash? Is that correct?
That really comes down to contract language, how the village and in the company would like to designate that. Sometimes you say, sometimes we have contracts that say anything over two units is considered a commercial account. Makes them exempt from the residential pricing. Some, you know, that typically is around two or three units. Anything over that becomes a commercial account.
Right now, we, I think it's three or less. Three or less will pick up, like say all three. I was just trying to think of.
I just know in their wording here, any, only number two units will be considered commercial.
And we can make that three. I mean, usually it's typically between two or three, so.
I know committee was kicking around the option two, which was with the general pickup concept. You know, everything would stay the same as what we're having now, except for the recycling would be extra service. But having two bulk pickups per month, two item, I said two items per month, right? And/or doing our regular four general, they would do four general pickups throughout the year, like what we're currently doing.
I like option two.
And not do it, we wouldn't do any massive general pickups throughout the year. Right.
That's when you get people coming in there and right through the whole household.
But if we notice that possibly the town's getting a little trashy, we could hire you for a general pickup, couldn't we?
Certainly could, yes.
I like two.
It's not that much price.
That's what we wanted to find out from the county.
What we like about option two is that it gives every resident the same opportunity to put out about two bulk items one time a month. Again, it does deter outside village residents from coming in and bringing in items to dispose of. And two items a month is typically plenty to accommodate, you know, what a normal household would need to get rid of in terms of bulk items. In addition to that, if a resident has used their bulk items for the month, okay, and they have extra things, they move, they can call us, make arrangements, we, we will pick those items up. They're not completely blocked out of getting any service. We'll, we'll take care of it. It's just going to be separate from what they're getting billed for on their utility bill.
Could you make a flat fee sticker, much like you're going to do for an extra bag that would be available here in town? So that, okay, I, I just got a new microwave, I want rid of my junk one. I could go up to Bruce Guilford Greel Tea and, and buy me a sticker to put on that?
The nice thing, I mean, we, we could definitely discuss that. The nice thing about the way we have it structured is a microwave is one price and a box bringing a mattress is a different price because it's based on, you know, the bulkiness of the material. So you hate for a person to pay, you know, X amount for a microwave and, and make that comparable to like, you know, something larger. So we have à la carte, you know, items that we can pick up. They would just call us and say, I have this item, this item, and this item. We would tell them what the cost is and then we could take it, so.
payments received.
Correct, yes, in advance.
Mike, oh, go ahead.
Who keeps track of the bulk items? Your drivers do that?
Once the resident called in and, and, oh, you mean like on a weekly?
Yeah.
Or monthly.
Or a monthly? Yeah. The, the, anything over two or anything that exceeds, you know, the, the language in the contract, they would make us aware. So say a resident puts out four bulk items. We're going to definitely take two. We would leave two there, but we would notify the resident. Yes.
They keep track?
Yes. Yes. And we would have a lot of times, you know, the resident will call and say, hey, you didn't take all my stuff? And we'll explain, you know, we take two a month and we took two and.
Until anything, if we go that route.
Right, yes, yeah.
We would, we don't want people, say you decide to do that and it's the first week of the month that you pick up those two bulk items. We don't want people sitting out as soon as you go by another couch and a refrigerator sitting out by the road for a month. You know, we, we want to deter that.
We have rules against that, don't we?
Yeah.
I mean, they can't put out their garbage until 6:00 PM the morning before.
Yeah, the night, the night before.
My life.
Mike, for the resident's sake, would you please explain what option two is that we're talking about so those that are in the audience know what we're considering?
Sure. With using Worlors as our collection, we would have a container that would have wheels on it. You can wheel it out. If you're an elderly resident, you can ask for a smaller container if you don't have as much, it's easier to handle. There's a recycling service that's, would also be weekly, correct?
Biweekly.
Oh, biweekly for recycling. And then have a container for that to put in your plastics and cardboard, aluminum, but no glass, correct? No glass. Glass goes in your trash can. We're also with council, been talking about this general pickup issue we've had for a number of years, but providing this service where you would be able to set out two bulk items per month and we would pick the, the week that those could go out. And then you would pick those up during the service. Anything more than that, you would have to get a bag tag and/or call. Yeah. Now, we still do the collections on all this, correct? The city? Or do you guys collect? That's the question I have.
We will bill the city. So you would, you would collect and then.
We always do. So you did, utility bills would have the rates on it just like usual. And then if anybody got charged anything extra above and beyond.
That would not appear, they, they would do that completely separate. The only thing that we would ever bill the village for is the straight service that's contracted.
Okay. So that would be between you and the resident, there was anything extra?
Correct.
I got everything on that.
How much per month?
Our bill will remain the same, correct?
That's what we're planning on doing.
You're planning on not increasing.
Except for you.
And you get no bulk.
Yeah.
But we're also starting a new billing program too, but off the cards. And we could have more information on the invoices once we send them out for directions and/or instructions with this new service. I don't know when that's, that's starting up pretty quick.
Cheryl, what?
I thought it was going to be ready here pretty shortly.
We could have a lot more information though added to the invoice to explain what is recyclable items, what you can put out in your containers, and when the week is of your bulk item pickup, so.
I think it would change just, let our residents know they're going to be getting a new type of bill in the mail, not because of this, but just in general, but since someone mentioned that.
Was it mentioned that they'll just pick up one day instead of having two days?
Do the sound.
Right now it's two days. Town's got trash. This will be just one day.
Because you have one person in the unit. The truck has one person. It's an automated system where the arm comes down, picks up the container, drops it in the bin. You know, if they have to get out of the truck in a busy street like our guys have been doing for years, you know, it's congested. That's why, you know, we can keep the prices low. There's not much fixed cost to it and still offer recycling program and some type of general pickup each, each month.
Casey, would you be interested in buying a late model garbage truck?
I could talk about it. I know, get tired of something. Maybe you want to keep it around for a little while, see how things go, whatever.
Well, I think we should keep it around for a little while to make sure that your program works for us, but after that, I don't see any reason to keep it.
Get new tires.
And I figure, I'm assuming they're virgins too.
Yeah, they're brand new. But they get hit in the nail with the dump tomorrow. Oh, yeah.
Do these trucks also pick up the larger containers like the, I can't remember, the commercial size?
Dumpster.
And we don't have any with our other residential containers? I'm thinking like the park and stuff like that. We have a different, is it a different company doing those or is that Worlors?
Yeah, we do.
Worlors does, I think the park, I think Reel does the pavilion, or it might be reversed. One, one does one, one does the other.
Why? Damn it, they ought to throw it in. Cover the whole town. Don't you want the whole town?
We can work on that once we get started.
Are the recycling containers the same size as the regular?
The recycling container is actually a 60 gallon cart and it has a yellow lid. So you have two different things going on. It really differentiates size-wise. So when the resident is, is putting their items in, they get the automatic differentiation plus the yellow lid. The smaller cart is actually more than accommodating for most households and it also eliminates contamination. If, if there's too much room there and there's not enough room in my trash can, I might throw it in there. So it's nice to have that, the size differentiation and the lid, so.
Are you going to differentiate between different numbers on plastics?
No, we take like one through six, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's single stream, so we have the educational material that we're happy to provide about what they can and cannot put in that container. And then everything just goes in the container.
I think some of the residents are really excited about recycling. I mean, that's one of the first things that people ask me, are you going to get recycling?
We've heard that for a long time. It's a three-year contract? I haven't read it.
Three year, yes.
What happens if we change our mind about it's two or three? Four general pickups? Can we change the contract in like the second year and say, hey, we want the general pickup again?
Yes, it's just an addendum to the contract with all parties agreeing and, yes.
Forty-nine cents difference.
I was thinking like what Ron said, you know, if we get to Christmas time and we go through this first year, it's like, my guys, we have a lot more trash and people have issues, you know, we could always, you know, do a special service or run with them and then charge us accordingly.
For 49 cents, we'd have four general pickups. But it's what the residents want, so.
Yes. Anyone present have any questions about what we're discussing here?
So the truck physically picks up the container to dump it?
Yep.
Do you pick it up out of the driveway or?
The, the curb. The carts go to the curb.
We won't, we don't have a curb.
There, there's educational material that we'll provide as well in terms of where you can place the container, what restrictions would be. We'll certainly work with you. We know that not every property is, is, you know, uniform and cookie cutter and there's going to be a few variances. So we would work with you individually where we'd like you to place that for service and make sure that our.
The only place we could place it would be in the driveway.
Like even on the corner of the drive.
It's the only place it could go.
And that would be okay as long as, you know, obstruction wise, we can get the, the truck in and get the arm to reach the, the cart and service it and put it back down, so.
How far is the arm reach?
What are we at on that? Is it six? Okay, yeah.
I'll probably be the first one to hit my garbage can in my driveway.
There'll be some areas that we'll have to work out. You know, there'll be some, some areas within the village that are a little more challenging in terms of getting a truck in there and getting carts where they need to be. And we'll work with everybody on, on those issues and make sure that everybody has a good place to put it and knows where it should be so we can make it efficient.
I have a good place to put it. I just have a tendency for it not to be in my line of vision as I'm backing out and.
Okay.
Any complaints go to you, Worlors, or to Kent?
Complaints would come directly to us. We would like to handle the customers. If it escalates and we need to work something out with the village, we'll go to Kent and then we would go from there.
I was going to ask council what, like you said, you like two?
Well, I'd like two. Forty-nine cents? Not a bad deal for four, four pickups.
You have it all then?
Huh?
You have it all?
I guess that was, I mean, number one, we have to decide if we want to do this. Number two, we have to decide which package we want. I think for 49 cents, if you're going to do a general four times a year.
Got to have a clean town.
It would, yes, it would definitely help keep the town clean because there's a lot of people.
Dog's excuse.
And there's nothing against you guys, so don't, don't, I'm not quibbling about 49 cents. How's it going to be any cleaner if they do it versus us?
Do, how we do it.
Doing a general pickup. I've not noticed town looking any better when we get down with a general pickup than it did before.
No, but if you just, if you just have where you can only put out two items, then those other four that they've got, they're just going to set them over there at the back of the house and that's where they're going to stay. If you don't believe me, take a trip around town. They're not coming back out in the next pickup. They're just staying back there.
Well, but I think that's where, on their general cleanup guideline, because that, I think at the committee meeting, you know, they talked about if somebody empties a house, you've got a cutoff point.
We do.
Which we should have.
Yeah.
We should have.
But then you're still going to have to deal with the leftovers for.
How do you deal, how do you deal with those situations?
What, what we provided tonight was a general cleanup guideline. This, some of the materials on there address your concerns about people emptying out houses or doing new construction and putting it all at the curb. Other than that, if, if they put it out and it, and it is something that we cannot take based on the cleanup guidelines, they can arrange to have it disposed of with our company. There's, you know, a lot of different options for them to dispose of that. How that is enforced, again, that's kind of out of our control because we can't force a resident to, to pay for something to be disposed of if they choose not to. I'm not sure if you have like a, a code, you know, a code director that could, you know, cite people or however you wanted to handle it, but the idea behind the general cleanup, some of the guidelines on there is to try to deter kind of some of the things that are happening now, where just massive amounts of material are coming in and being put out on the curb.
You actually got the tonnage that we've been picking up.
We did.
That's how you come up with this price.
That's correct.
So, but just looking at this cleanup general guidelines, very well, what ours? No tires, no liquid burn barrels. We'll pick up furniture, TV, mattresses, couches. So, so if a house does get emptied, you should be able to pick it up because you have the tonnage. And that's why the price is probably a little higher.
Tonnage, tonnage won't affect it.
What's, and I know we talked about this too. The problem's going to boil down to manpower on their behalf because some of the stops where the guys spend 45 minutes, they're not going to be able to do that with, with their crew. They're not going to be able to bring in 10 people like we have available when we do ours. That's why I'd like option two.
I think option two eliminates the.
Having stuff, no. Yeah.
Well, then you're asking, hold on to something you want to get rid of for two or three months until a general pickup is, you know, available.
It is a more consistent approach to getting rid of the bulky items, putting out a couple of, you know.
And they were gracious enough to give us the option. If it didn't work, we could all amend.
A major, what, with communities our size that you service now, do a majority lean towards option two?
The two items per month is usually.
Are popular.
Now, I don't know if any, anybody that has the amount of tonnage that you guys are bringing.
I can say that there's no community that, that produces that kind of tonnage, especially on a general cleanup. Most of the municipalities are going to an item.
We'd like to throw in six or eight other towns around.
Residents are paying the price for that.
Right, yeah.
And you guys are now, I mean, even if you guys kept it yourself, it's still not a good situation.
We've tried everything to curb it and can't get the job done. So I like the idea and I guess I like two. So where do we go from here?
Let them know if they want.
Do we?
I do.
Yes.
I think we're all kind of in agreement on that, right? I think it'd be a good.
Can I make a motion that we enter into a contract with Porter?
Well, we still got to do the resolution for the actual contract, but you can, but would you like a motion that you want?
I'll second that motion. Is it number two?
And then one, option two.
Okay, we have something from the fire chief.
What are we doing with our buildings? Are we getting totes? Are we getting dumps?
Get a tote.
Okay, we have an event. We make those six months with two bags of garbage a week and then we have to be back and we've got 20 bags.
You get that pickup truck a little bit full.
What do you do then? What will happen? Let us know you have a special event. We'll take care of it.
And is it an extra fee?
What about the garbage cans uptown?
Um, it works, well, sometimes it's collected up by someone in the village and set, I mean, we'll take it of course, or we can service them. We just need to know.
Yeah, they've got the swivel lids.
We can't service them with the truck. It would be a manual service, so.
One thing I thought, as far as keeping our truck for a while, we might end up having to do a few oddball things.
Is that extra?
No, it's not extra. The thing with that is like when we service it, we're going to pull the bag out and we're going to go. We're not, you know what I mean? Like if you want to manage it, make sure there's another bag in there and it's ready to go. So a lot of the, what's that? You don't have bags in there? You just dump them? Okay.
But you don't, you do those every week? Really?
Yeah, we could probably do them twice a week. Some people.
No kidding.
Use them for their household.
Do you know how many you have roughly down through town?
But usually there's an extra fee for it.
Okay, no problem. They'd get taken care of.
Yeah, your driver'd have to drive, stop, get out, dump it by hand, get back in. We hold up traffic.
Labor.
Now with our truck doing that, it'd be a lot worse than the one.
Would you be, would you guys be willing for us to work something out with Kent to either get that collected in one area that we can get or just. that collected in one area that we can get, or just so that it's taken care of?
It would be much better for everybody, probably for Kent to run that through there with a-
However you wanna do it.
Little one-ton dump and pick-
Certainly to take it, so. We'll certainly take the refuse, but.
Troy, have you read the contract?
I did.
Okay.
It seemed pretty routine.
You did not, oh, you did, okay.
I did, I did.
So we have a motion and a second to enter into an agreement.
And I think while we're doing it, we wanna add that to three units or whatever.
Do you wanna change it to three?
From two, that's what our current, that's basically the same as what we have, if it's triplexes and below, it's covered by this, if it's fourplexes and above, it's commercial and subject to-
That's not, that won't be affecting anybody currently, that part.
Yep.
Yes.
Would it be okay to make that a motion pending changes to the agreement satisfactory to Kent and the solicitor?
Yeah, I mean, we still have to pass a resolution, enter into the contract, like a written resolution.
Yeah, he'll have to bring it back.
I can bring it to the next meeting, but-
Okay.
But they still could go along and take a vote, so that directed me to do it or whatever.
Well, I second Ron Beverley's motion to accept number two.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
Jones? How soon do we, before we see this change, anybody know?
I'll, I'll give you my thoughts and then Troy and Michelle and Casey can recut all that's involved. I don't, I don't know if Troy would have legislation ready to bring back, say, at next meeting. Maybe he can.
Yeah, I can.
But they probably oughta take a look at the draft contract, you come up, if that all gets worked out.
Yeah, I mean.
And if Troy could bring it for first reading, I'm assuming you won't wanna do it as an emergency, that gives the public time to-
So if it's normal in thirty days, first of September, we could do it, right?
No, 'cause you gotta wait the thirty days after you pass it.
Six weeks to have.
Round and round, three plus thirty days, maybe like October for you.
Yeah, I think you're gonna have some.
We're, that's a, that's a large order of carts for us, so once we have a signed contract, we will order carts. That could be eight to twelve weeks before we get those delivered, just to give you guys a timeframe.
So legislation could actually kick in, I mean, rounding off, say, like October first, but it still might be close first of the year, possibly.
Potentially.
Now, you can waive the readings if you want, I don't think I would.
That doesn't make it an emergency, but you could wait for the readings if you wanted to. See, that's separate from the emergency.
You might have twenty-five people every meeting from here on out.
As things are going, we'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, we are available anytime to answer questions or concerns, we're, we're very, very excited about the opportunity to, to work with the village and provide the residents this service. There will be a few bumps, I'm not going to sugarcoat that, there will be some issues that we need to work out. Couple weeks into this, couple months into this, it will be running so smooth, you guys won't give it a second thought, and residents will be happy and they'll be contacting us and we'll take it from there. So that's just been our experience over the years with other municipalities that we service, out of the gates, there are a few bumps, you know, everyone works together and communicates, that's the key for us, we want you to know, communicate with us if you have issues or concerns, so we can take care of it and get it addressed, so that we can make it as easy as possible for everybody.
What communities do you service and on defiance?
We service, yes, we service defiance, we also, around this particular area, we have, this is more like Fulton Williams County, but we have, we do Pioneer, we do Montpelier, we have Waldron up in Michigan, Stryker, La Cian, Lyons, Fayette, I'm forgetting somebody, Lyons, Fayette, Stryker, La Cian, I think those are our big ones, yeah. Paulding, of course, yeah.
What would be the pickup day for Hicksville?
I'm not sure yet.
I'm not sure the actual day.
Within a contract restrictions, or is there anything that could increase your contract within a three-year period?
The landfill cost.
But that would be it?
It's defiance, right? So the-
Correct.
And I don't anticipate defiance, I might feel increase anytime soon, state district fees might go up, if that's out there for us, but even if it does, it wouldn't be that much.
And we would not automatically do that, we would come to you, explain what the increase was, how it was calculated, you, you would know well in advance before we, you know, tacked anything onto the pricing, so.
And have we had any increases here with our officer?
They did something a couple of years ago, but it was pretty-
Two years ago.
Was it, okay.
The commi-
It wasn't.
The commissioners at one time said they hadn't increased their landfill fees for years.
I guess that's where more for Cheryl, 'cause I'll forgive her, if when Dawn's back, she's probably gonna have to start gathering for super accurate addresses and all that kinda stuff now versus waiting till, say, December first, if you're ready to start December first.
We can actually start doing some of the administrative stuff on the backside, meaning we can get started on some of that prior to a contract execution, so.
But you might wanna see some of that even in it.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you, Michelle and Casey, for coming and answering our questions tonight and explaining it to everyone, so that we all understand what our options are, so.
For now, I'll just let you three work it out, if we need any fine, otherwise I'll just let you three work it out.
Okay, sounds great, thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Looking forward to it. Okay, we're going to go on to, we're gonna skip, skip the next couple of things here. We're gonna go on to the notice of a public hearing, boarding Zoto appeals, the library has asked for a setback variance, that meeting, or hearing, whatever you wanna call it, is scheduled for Wednesday, July 12th at 4:00 PM, at 110 South Main Street, I assume, North Main Street, I mean, 110 North Main Street. They wanna change a setback from forty foot to twenty foot.
And I'll just clarify that a little, right now, and this goes, this goes years back, probably when the library was built, they're only twenty-seven feet away now, so they're not really asking for a twenty-foot, they're basically asking for an extra seven foot, I mean, it's been the old Eagle since either the house or library was built, can't go back sixty years and change it, so it's not quite as extreme as it appears.
Okay. So, boards and commissions, did Hicks TV have a meeting June 10th?
No, I, I thought it was in the main minutes, I apologize if I accidentally left it out, but at the main meeting, as usual, we decided to suspend our meetings for June, July, and possibly August.
Okay, I did not think we had a meeting, but I thought maybe I just-
We, we voted to suspend meetings for the next two, possibly three months.
Okay, thank you. We then go on to the park board meeting minutes from June 21st that were in the packets. Is there anyone here from the park board? Okay.
I'll say, I'll add a couple things.
Yes, please do, please do.
The restrooms, with me being off some and other stuff going on, I'm gonna have to follow up with Feller Finch on that one, I don't think anybody heard from him while I was off. And the lights down there, like second from the bottom, I did get with Ned Steel, so he's supposed to be taking care of those, they asked me to get ahold of somebody to do that. The other stuff I can't explain or answer for, so.
The tennis courts are done, I got some compliments on those and pickleball lines are all on.
That's great, I'm excited to start playing pickleball.
I know with the park board, with the parking issue, the last thing there, even with that huge new gravel parking lot, there's still people parking up in the grass, after rain events, and they just, they wanna crack out on it.
All the green, it's the bogs, I went to the other, people parallel parking, or there's no parking, people parking willy-nilly.
And I know they wanna put some more restrictions on that, I mean, they-
And I see in their minutes, it said that people that are parking in the grass, the first time they'll be warned, and then they'll be ticketed, so people, if that's you, you've had your notice. So, I don't know how they're gonna keep track of first or second warning, but they might just need to go right to ticketing, it's posted. So. Any other comments about the park?
No, I know we had with handicap parking and then golf carts and everything, they, you know, those restricted areas where they don't want the golf carts riding up into the area where people are walking or kids are running, you know, they can park their golf carts.
Is that where this guy wants to drive to?
Yeah. Well, they're asking for, I think the, one of the fields does not have any handicap parking areas for cars, so they were addressing that, anybody wanted to see their, the backfield back there, there's no way to get a car back there unless they go up more up by the waterworks building, and they're taking a look at that for next year, like baseball's pretty much done for the season. There were some issues with golf carts going into kinda unrestricted areas or restricted areas, they had brought up the concern of what if somebody parks handicap parking, can't get to the restroom, well, they need, we can't put restrooms everywhere in the park, you know, and we understand there's needs and concerns for that, but at the same time.
I pointed out the valve, and there again, I, this year's most I've ever been in a park with your kids, some of the people that drive their vehicles back to that concession stand and park all night, I don't think it's necessary.
Like I said, I haven't been down there in years, but-
I don't think it's any special versus-
Where they parked at?
Right up by the concession stand.
Are the people watching the game?
Yeah.
People that are probably working inside.
Work the concession.
Yeah, and they should-
They drive up through the grass, backside of the ball fields.
I didn't notice any.
Call a wrecker.
I would, I could see if they had stuff to unload for the concession stand, one vehicle drive out there to unload their supplies, I could see that, but yeah, and then go park it, but.
But the golf carts, I seen down there that was watching the games, they weren't handicap, they're ruining it for the handicap, that's what's going on. They know better.
See that the park board will take care of that, so.
That's what needs one time and-
Going on then, we'll go to the council committee reports, police, fire, and EMS had a meeting June 12th and June 26th, and I do not know that there were any meetings turned in for those, may we have a verbal report at least on those?
The 26th was when committee interviewed for another part, another full-time EMT, which was awarded to Robert Myers, that's pretty much condensed, that meeting, the meeting before that was not very productive, and, and the guy that's in charge of that committee didn't make any minutes, he didn't turn none in, and I think he should be banned.
But I think he will do it, right?
He probably will.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the finance committee meeting, June 26th, and there are minutes in the packet, would you like to?
Anybody got any questions? There were seven items that we discussed, financing for now and three or four years out, the property on West Thai, which is the multi-property, the committee felt need more information, I don't think we have any more information yet, right, so, and then the Huber, we got asked about giving some money to the Huber, one-time gift or maybe three years in a row, and it was brought up, maybe using revolving loan, loan money, and I talked to Cheryl, she looked it up for me, and the guidelines are only use that money to job creation and retention of jobs, so, and that's not what the Huber would need it for. If they did give money to the Huber, it'd have to be a one-time gift, like we did the Veterans Memorial, through the general fund. Hiring a full-time EMT and fire chief down the road, right now, the fire budget is very tight, we've got $260,000 in the fire fund, so it's just gonna be tight, so I just want everybody to know, that could be a problem. And as far as utilities on industrial drive, we are obligated to do that probably in the next two or three years, that'll be a projection cost of $750 to $1 million to put the utilities in. Water tower, that's three to five years out, and if we decide to pursue, which I think we're gonna have the first reading tonight, there is maybe grants or low-interest loans to fund that Kent focus, so. Now, on the utilities on industrial drive, there is no grants available, so that's gotta come out of our-
That's what I was gonna say, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hit your revolving loan too hard, 'cause you might need to dip into that.
Right, right. As far as the property on Arthur Street, for park developing, I think we're very, committee's very interested to try to get that property weekend, one-time shot to get that, and once it's sold, we'll never get it back, so. Paving rows that need to be paved, Haver Drive, is that gonna get paved, right, that's in the contract, Kent?
That one, we're gonna see when, if, I'm not gonna say when, I'm gonna see if everything ever gets done, if there's gonna be enough money left out of that existing budget call it to do it, otherwise, yeah, you'll have to find some money somewhere to do it. And as far as the other roads that Ron had brought up last time, when Ken Kearns was in town a couple of weeks ago, he was getting like rough measurements and all this and that, he's supposed to be shooting me a price at some point, showing what he would project overlaying or rebuilding, all those will come to, I don't have it yet.
Oh, when that project's done, we're gonna have to repair it, can't wait two or three years.
Well, yeah, if you can find money. I guess Fish has got a lot if he's-
Still doing?
We can name it Fisher Drive or something.
Took that hundred thousand pounds from him, he's a little short right now.
But no, I, yeah, I mean, Haver will get repaved, we just have to wait and see.
But there's not money in the contract originally to cover the paving, I thought there was.
I thought you said that we were-
I thought he said he was.
-left over to do that.
Last, Ken Kearns-
I'll double check.
All projects are stated paved.
That's what I was thinking, but I know I talked to him about it, I honestly can't remember, I'd have to go look.
We talked about it a month ago.
But we talked about getting it totally done, no matter what.
It was in there and it was gonna be done.
Okay, I'll still double check.
Okay, that's what we discussed, last but not least.
That's a must.
Yeah. Many did recommend hiring Troy Essex for another year, solicitor, but we're having the first reading tonight, so I'm not sure why the finance, but we did, we went ahead to-
First and all committees maybe the same as the finance committee?
Committee's close, but we went ahead and did the recommendation, so we'd have to vote on it anyway.
So does he got three times to make comment, is what I told him.
So that's, that was a long meeting, we, about an hour and a half, and, financially, financially, the city's in good shape financially, except the fire fund, that's the one, we gotta be really careful.
Nothing going on right at this time, Bob.
So that's all I got.
Good report, thanks for updating us on all those topics. Okay, we will go on to the street light and property meeting, there were minutes put on the table tonight, and Sheila, if you could tell us about your committee report, and then maybe you want to go on into having Mark speak to the group?
Yeah. We met on the 28th, and it is Ron Beverley, Mike Barth, and I, and we talked about several things, and one of them was the trailer park, and we're gonna meet with Mr. Haver and talk to him, see what we can do about getting that cleaned up, and we talked about the chamber and the Huber, and we suggested that the finance committee take that over, and they already had taken that over. And Ron Beverley had contacted Mr. Countryman about the land down at the school, and he's on vacation, was on vacation at that time, he always back, and he's waiting on the survey, he wouldn't give a price until he had the survey back, and then we had the two bandits come up, and we had a nice little- back, and then we had the two bandits come up, and we had a nice little talk with them. They're, they would like to put seven tables up front of their restaurant, seven tables and chairs and a four-foot fence underneath the awning. The committee decided to let them try two tables for a couple of weeks, just to see how it goes, get a feel of it, and they're here tonight, if anybody has any questions. And I'm still concerned about the safety of it, I think seven tables is a lot to put underneath that little awning, but...
We voted on this once, right?
Yes, we did, voted it down, and then the gentleman came up, and we had quite a lengthy discussion about it, and we all thought that...
Give him a try.
Let's give it a shot, let's put a couple of tables out there, you know, different things we discussed, possibly their, their waitstaff might not like going through double doors to serve people, maybe the, there won't be people that wanna sit out there, let's move up into some modern times, give it a try with a couple of tables, if it works, we don't get any complaints and people love it, hey, let's let them do it.
If you have any questions, they're here to answer the questions.
Well, I talked to them about this, they're good people.
So...
I just am concerned about the distance between the street.
The safety of it, yeah.
And discussing the wrought iron fence that they're going to put up, I told, we as committee said it wouldn't be necessary to do that, just put it, something temporary as they do the, the two-table system for a couple of weeks and see how that goes, and then if it works and there's no problems for anybody, and they're not ringing the mayor's phone off the wall, or ours, and people like it, and pay more power to them, and then they'll put in a permanent wrought iron fence that will be taken down in, you know, off-season time, they'll unbolt it from the, you know, just put lags in the concrete and take it away when it's snowplowing time. I was, I was against it when we voted the first time, in talking with them, and, and, and I, you know, when I used to travel all the time, I see that everywhere, so let's move up. So, I guess Sheila, as the chairperson, is presenting that, that we wanna allow them to do a couple of tables for two to three weeks, Sheila has in her minutes, three weeks is the maximum. I don't know if you wanna vote on it again, or if you just wanna let it slide, I don't know how you wanna do it, but I think we oughta give them a chance.
I agree.
Are there any questions from anyone that's sitting here in the audience or anything about this?
Say it, Pat, I see it, you have one? You don't have one?
I tell you, Grill in Auburn has a nice little eating area.
That's what one of them suggested, yes.
And it's clear out to the asphalt, you know, you gotta walk out into the parking.
It's not the main driver's trying it. They're a tiny grill, it's a parking.
Well, it's a strip.
I mean, I just for record, try, totally do record, just...
I'll make a motion, solicitor said that we could revote since we voted before, I would make the motion that we let two bandits give this a try for two to three weeks, and if there's not a lot of complaining and not a lot of problems, let them go on with what they're doing, they're excellent businessmen, or appear to be excellent businessmen to me, and I think it's a good asset for our community.
Well, you know, I'd be the first, I love entrepreneurship. I like somebody thinking out of the box, and they're thinking out of the box. My only concern is, when I mentioned Italian Grill, well, that's in a shopping mall.
Understand.
Right.
You don't have bicycles, you know, you don't have everything that's going on uptown like we have, and it's free to adjust around that in the town.
But as, after we spoke with the gentleman, I've been kinda keeping an eye on certain parking areas uptown, and I watched the sidewalk quite a bit, you know, except for people walking in and out of their place, there's no business up there, I mean, there's, you know, I'm not seeing a lot of bicycles like I thought we would after Sheila pushed that through. I didn't think, you know, I don't...
In my opinion, the first few months, they run a class act, I mean, it's, they're running a good ship, it's...
Yeah.
So...
I was in Minneapolis this weekend, and the sidewalk was probably between Pat and I, and they had about four foot for pedestrians, the rest of it were tables, and a lot of people walking, but...
A lot tighter than what we have now, I mean, they're gonna have probably more than four foot between.
The only thing that I would suggest to Kent is, there is a dumpster, or trash can, one of the concrete cans, possibly we could relocate that a little further one way or the other.
Maybe planter also.
The planter.
Yeah, we've thought about that.
Big planter there, yeah. That would help, that would definitely help.
Round, second's my motion.
Did I, could I hear your motion again, please?
My motion is to allow two bandits to go ahead and try this on a temporary basis for two to three weeks, and if there's no problems, your phone doesn't ring off the wall, our phones don't ring off the wall, confronted on the street, let them do what they want, what they have proposed with the wrought iron and the other tables, and I think it'll be, I think it'll be a good thing for the community.
Will we revote on this?
We're going to right now.
I mean, after the trial period?
Sure, we have to.
Would we have to, solicitor?
Sure we would.
Should.
Okay, yes, we'll vote on it next time.
Do we have any ordinances currently that we would need to change if this is in fact allowed long-term? I'm trying to think if there's...
Off the top of my head, I can do necessarily.
Something...
Dip, dip, which one of those places have to get a council approval to put a sign out there for the business?
We have a sign ordinance.
Sign, so...
Yeah.
Their, their, their two tables in front of their, their business would, would look far more attractive than the steel bins in front of the old tip-top.
We have a motion in a second, roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
That's it.
Hold it.
One question, ma'am. If you're, what you're telling me is that we're gonna try this for, is it two weeks or three weeks?
Three.
Three.
Just three weeks, and if we okay it right now, then we're gonna come back after...
After three weeks.
And talk about how many tables they're gonna be allowed. Are you guys firm on seven? That seems to me like we're pretty tight across the front of the building.
They're measured, yeah.
We, first of all, we wanna thank you guys for reopening this for us, we're grateful for that, and secondly, we're willing to acknowledge whatever you folks suggest. We humbly believe that seven is the magic number. I know this sounds crazy, but I do study a lot of marketing for things like this, and strangely enough, odd-numbered tables are more eye-appealing and draws people into a place. I'm not joking, they've actually done studies on it, I know it sounds crazy, but my, to answer your question, what we're looking at is six, if you're looking at the building, so if they know the road, we get the building, six of them, ideally, if everything went according to plan, six of them would be to the left of the entrance door, and then there would be one to the right of the entrance door, and then, of course, if everything came to fruition, we'd have, you know, that, that polished casual wrought iron fence on both sides, and so, and, and there's, that's a twofold thing, that's to obviously demarcate the guests who are dining from the passerby, that's number one. And they would, they would be just little bistro tables of wrought iron style tables, what Bob and I are thinking of doing, and like everything inside, we would carry that whole, that whole theme outside, and of course, I know that Sheila had expressed some concern about trash and cigarette butts, and I wholeheartedly agree, I mean, it wouldn't do us any good to allow that to be uncut, it would, it wouldn't look good for anyone, the village or ourselves, so, I mean, we would aggressively police that for, for trash as well as cigarette butts, we do that now, but we would obviously do that, you know, on a continual basis, but to answer your question, so, so the guests would set east to west, if you will, parallel with the building, and we do that for two reasons, number one, so that, you know, 'cause Ron and I had a good discussion about that last time, making sure that someone can't pony up a third or a fourth seat, so it becomes like a giant party, that's not what that's intended for, if you wanna go in and socialize with a group, that's what inside is for, this is for, you know, a couple, and, you know, they wanna have a little more intimate setting, and it'll look nice for the village when people drive by and see people out there in the sunshine dining.
And one other thing, if I might interrupt to add, I was thinking in bistro, I was thinking the tall tables, and these will be normal, normal height, yeah.
I knew that part.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that because I was thinking tall, and it won't be, so...
And I think that's what you do, when you think tables.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Basset.
Still have concerns on safety, and everyone else opening up, but I'll vote yes for the trial.
Beverley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
I already got yours. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
The only thing, whenever you're ready to do your thing, let me know, and we'll see about moving stuff, that way we'll know.
Thanks, Ken.
Which way to move, whatever.
We wanted to wait to hear from the full council before we obviously made any financial decisions, so Bob and I are going to look at a couple of tables, probably as soon as we're finished here, and then we'll go from there, and as soon as we have the tables ready, we'll obviously let you know that, okay, we have them, and you tell us when it's appropriate for us to put them out, and that's when we'll roll.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your committee report, do you have anything else, Sheila?
Uh, no, I think that's it.
Okay.
Cemetery, I'll have a cemetery meeting July 12th at 6:30.
Okay. Where are those held?
Right here.
Right here? Cemetery meeting here, July 12th, what time?
6:30.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll hear from the administrator.
I guess the biggest thing is, I guess they have some council approval on the new hire. Ended up interviewing two of the gentlemen, they both came with good references, things like that. I lean more towards Rick Rickard, and I guess based on what he'd be bringing, that's why I wanna, I would start him out as a grade four laborer at 1209, and they're again subject to the physical drug screen, background check stuff.
What will he be doing?
He'd just be filling this spot on the street department, and then once the trash decision is finalized, I've got some other ideas.
See local person?
Yeah.
See local?
Yes, he lives on East Thai Street. Your grandpa's former apartment, I'm not sure who owns it now, but, so, yeah, he's here in town, he'd be a couple of minutes from work, that, references I called and stuff, that's the only thing he doesn't have, but at this point, with the rate we've been turning over people and to worry about it until, I know he's gonna stick around, and during probation, I'm not gonna worry about it at all.
But he is aware that if he stays, he will...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Street department employee, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Did he have any working outside experience?
Yep.
Background?
Yeah, I mean, he's not labeling every country.
Weather, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he's, he's grown up doing stuff like, or being exposed to the elements, put it that way.
Okay, okay.
And I stress the garbage truck factor, 'cause it still seems to be what ends up turning a lot of people off, so. Anyway, I guess it's up to the mayor if she wants to recommend or not, so...
I apologize because I did not see your minutes in the packet when I looked through it.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Didn't see what?
No, I, when I looked through the packet, I didn't see Kent's report, but it was obviously in here, but I didn't, but I think I just, yeah. I will move that we hire Rick Rickard, as a grade four laborer, for the street department, subject to physical, drug screen, and background check.
You really think you need to know?
Yep.
If we end up keeping trash, yes, but like I said, if, even if I fill this spot, well, I think I talked to water sewer committee about it.
Yeah, Waters, Jesse and both, I talked to Troy, they're, they say they're backed up, and with maintenance and upkeep on some of their jobs, I mean, just to help with Kit, you know, and his departments, and they're, they're all his departments, but they, they've expressed interest in hiring a third on water. We looked into it, we didn't make any decision on it.
They used to have three.
Don't faint, don't faint.
You know, and everybody, they, they have to ask to get, and we have to discuss and think about it, and look at where they would fit best with their different positions, you know, going through the construction projects, and I might say we need one or not, I'm just saying that's what they brought to the table, saying they would, they would like a third. I talked to Troy Sargent, Jesse already brought it committee, and he says, yeah, we are, we are backed up on regular maintenance, I don't know what they do, I don't walk in their shoes, I mean, some of us, you know, have an idea what...
Be a good idea to ask them.
Yeah, and I did, I asked.
And here again, I know some of this is ancient history, but the water department had always had three for years and years and years, up until, what, '08 or whatever, and that's where my plan would be, if you get rid of trash, I wasn't gonna come back and say, now I wanna hire an extra body for the water department, I'd still have six people, but I would take somebody from the street and assign them to water...
And then also help more on the sewer end.
So, I'd still have six people, so none of this is gonna affect the budget, I'm not adding a body.
And I think it's good to cross-train these guys that work at the water plant and help with, you know, the guys down there, you've worked on cross-sections over the years and different projects, I think they all have, it's good to have an idea what the other, if they can fill in at times and, and help out.
Kent's history is, he's very conservative, so he doesn't want somebody unless he feels it's a good move, so he's been at this position...
I can see down the road, we're probably gonna have, you know, we're gonna have retirement, you know, in the near, not in the near future, but a few years down the road.
Kent? Sure.
You got people that, you hired two and you lost one real quick, and nobody likes, you know, increasing the overhead any more than I do as far as payroll.
See, that's where, that's really won't.
Yeah, I just will go on Kent's recommendation, that's who runs the ship.
I'll go on the mayor's recommendation that we hired.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please. Barth?
Yes.
Hedley?
I'm thinking.
Jones?
Beverley?
Plus, I don't hear good.
I gotta say no, 'cause I don't know what we're gonna do with another guy.
Basset?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
I guess...
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The only other thing is, we're finally meeting with EPA next Wednesday, so, I mean, I pray to whoever for some common sense to rule, and at this point, we'll, we'll go up, we're gonna discuss this flow metering versus judging us by our CSO events, and also the Chicago Avenue pond, which I don't think's gonna be possible, but they're still, they might still press us to do something at neck of the woods, that I really don't wanna do at this point, so I'm hoping they will trade one of our side projects for that, but...
Go up and present our case, so...
That's all you can do.
Regarding our side, our side projects, Kent, do we have, are they working? I mean, are you, are they satisfactory, are you, do you, our side projects, as Kent calls them, are Pearl Street, Columbia Street, since we've...
Are we pulling water out?
Oh, yeah, I was talking to Austin today, and that rain we had last week, that pipe coming off Antwerp Dry was flowing, except about half full.
Oh, yeah, the, the...
We're pulling a lot of water off of them.
The ordered projects, yeah, I mean, Antwerp and Ogen, now Pearl Columbia is a side one, what we're gonna be doing on East Cornelia is a side one, so that one we can't...
Do we know how the result, how their, how our side ones, those two have, are working?
Well, it's all gonna be based on the flow meters there on Defiance Avenue for Pearl Columbia.
Which right now we're not doing. Which right now we're not doing, even though they want us to, okay.
Yeah, we got our flow meter there.
So are our flow meters proving anything yet?
So it's showing, it's showing some, they're showing improvement, yes.
But see, that's, that's where I don't, I don't give a, what it's showing, has gone through those meters, have we reduced our CSOs, that's a better judge of if they're doing any good or not. And that's what I wanna get them to agree to, that just look at his monthly reports, see if we've gone from X number to Y number, if showing what we're doing is working versus we got rid of 10 million gallons.
Have we seen any results yet?
Yeah, we've had an abundance of rain, have we had any CFOs?
Yeah, we've got some, there's, there's still some CSOs happening, not as, not as often, and they don't last as long, but we still.
And I think, there again, once we ever get done with Main, Main Brian, I think you'll see a huge hit.
That would be the biggest, biggest impact we have is when we get Brian Street opened up, when we take that out of, all that water out of the box. I think we'll see a, we'll see a big, big improvement there.
As big as it is, you would hope so. Yeah. So I guess that's, when, when it comes back to finances, if we, if they end up saying, fine, you can't, don't, don't worry about the pond on Chicago, but you still gotta do something in that neighborhood if we're out to find them, because that's a phase one, so we gotta get that done by 2019. Yeah, see, for a long time it was tied up legally, I didn't think you'd ever get freed up to by it, so that's what I told them. Well, then I found out that it did get solved not too long ago, and somebody snapped it up right off the bat. So I, I let Andy know that too, that I don't think we're ever gonna be able to buy that land, and I don't think that pond was gonna do, it was gonna be a drainage project again.
It was on the wrong end of the field, yeah.
So I don't know if they'll say, well, go ahead and separate Chicago, or if we got to do something where they were gonna scramble to figure out what.
Was that pond gonna be on one person's property, or was it gonna be on two people's property?
It was gonna be all on, and I'll say the Thornburg Farm, it was gonna all be on that, but we were going to also need part, we were gonna need easements from a four or five other people. And it might have encroached just a little on somebody else's property.
Okay.
The vast majority was on the Thornburg Farm. So anyhow.
Okay. Anything else to report Kent? Does anybody have any questions for Kent?
Maybe at the next meeting I'll have some. Keep you unsuspended, but now.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to the solicitor's report.
First thing I have is Resolution 2017 dash 14, first reading by caption only. Resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to rehire Cory Deskes to the village's district, the village of Hicksville. Then, Resolution 2017 dash 15, which we could take the, Kent said today we could take the emergency lunges off, so. A resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Bobbi Meyer Design Group to provide engineering and design services for the elevated water storage tank siting plan and elevation tank design.
That can go, all three readings.
The next thing on my list, they had talked from the income tax department, there's a program through the attorney general's office in the state of Ohio where they will help assist collecting certain types of debt on behalf of the village. And the primary way that they do it is, if you enter into your contract in the correct way, they have the ability, when people are eligible for state tax refunds and/or if they win like instant lottery or lottery, regular lottery winnings that have to be reported through the state, to where they can intercept those funds and use them to pay collection bills that they're collecting on behalf of municipalities. This would be just income tax only, but it would take away from some of the things we send off to third-party vendors to collect that charges a fee and when they, when they collect, and they don't often collect, so. There is a package of materials that I reviewed. One of the things that it needs in order to do it is it need, doesn't need enough formal resolution or ordinance, but it does need council blessing so that we can say at a meeting, you know, vote was taken and they authorized the village to enter into an agreement with the EPA's office to collect those debts for us, so. On behalf of the income tax department, I guess I would ask that somebody approve such thing so that we can get the paperwork signed and forwarded back to the state so they can step, start trying to help us collect.
And this is just debt collection?
It's just income tax, it's not utility bills or things of that, it's just income tax, it's a.
And our clerk, and past clerk, and our finance guy thinks it's a good deal?
Yes, Cheryl does, and I do. We have to have a judgment against it first, correct? Before it gets to this point.
It's not a judgment, you don't have to take it to court and get a judgment, it has to be like a, a final assessment or a final determination.
Absolute.
An absolute, right, 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 right. That's the only thing, you don't have to take them to court and get judgment on them.
So you want that voted on?
Please.
Well, three financial people think it's a good deal, so I'll make the motion that we agree to it.
Second.
Roll call please. Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
I'll get with her and we'll, there's some paperwork that needs to be signed and filled out, and we'll get that done and sent in. I got about half a draft on a contract with Sherwood. The thing that I need to do, and I tried calling and the gal wasn't available, their clerk or whatever, when I tried calling is, I need to try and, and I don't know if anybody here knows and, or maybe somebody in the income tax does, is when they're current, they currently have a contract with Rita that collects for them, and I'm not certain when that contract expires.
I thought it was January, but I'm not sure.
I, for some reason I thought it was towards the end of the year, or whatever, so I, I need to get with them and ask a couple of questions, and then we can have a draft to circulate to everybody to look at, and we got plenty of time, obviously. If it gets to that point, we can't really start taking over until their contract expires. The, I'll skip a little bit and go back, the Nolte's Trailer Park has been brought up a couple of times, I don't think there's anything new to add on that. The Red Angel petition, if anybody wants to see it, Cheryl hasn't, they've, they've submitted their petition with their signatures to Cheryl, and under the law, it's gotta sit basically in Cheryl's office for 10 days in case anybody wants to view it, take a look at it. And then she makes a determination, a real simple determination, if on its face, it appears that it's procedurally in order, and it appears to be procedurally in order. And then she's gotta certify it after the 10th day down to the Board of Elections, and then they do a review. And once the review is done, they, once the, once the review on that is done, then there's a process where they ship it back, but it ends up going on the ballot, and it's not really our, we don't really have anything in it where we can look at it and say.
Get out that question.
Either we're questioning any of the signatures or anything like that, or the language in the ordinance itself that's proposed, it may, I'm not saying it in particular, an ordinance proposed like this may very well be unconstitutional. I'm not saying this one, as I'm just saying in general, it may be, but we don't have the right to reject it on that grounds or anything, even, even if I said to Cheryl, hey, there's no way in the world this meets constitutional grounds, we still gotta pass it along and the Board of Elections have to deal with it, and if it ends up getting passed, then like any other law could be challenged constitutionally, it could be challenged constitutionally. But that's not something that the village really gets into, we're kinda just the, the middleman passing it along for the ride, so that'll be done. I think the 10 days is up on Friday, and Cheryl will get that over to the Board of Elections on Monday, and then we'll wait to see, they'll go through, they check the signatures and everything more formal, just like they do when you guys have to submit your petitions to run for reelection and things like that, so. That's that. Diane had brought up in an email, an ordinance based upon something that came up, restrictions for tearing down buildings. There certainly is the ability, and I looked at it a little bit, where we can do that. I guess the question you gotta ask yourself is, at some point, it turned into micromanaging everything. I mean, the issue, the particular issue that Diane brought to my attention, I guess my, my instant reaction to that was, that's not a village problem, that's a problem between two private citizens involving a real estate deal, and if somebody did something they weren't supposed to, then they may have recourse, but the village may have interest in.
Well, you know, something was kinda pointed out to me that that might be an EPA issue.
It may be.
Digging a hole and pushing a house in.
Can't be good for the groundwater.
No.
That would make it a village, but this, the issue of the property owner having to take a bunch of extra steps and incur a bunch of additional expenses because he bought a piece of real estate, that somebody did something like that on, that part of it is a, is a private civil matter, no different than, you know, if Ron bought a property and there was 500 tires buried in the ground or whatever like that, he'd have the recourse against who he bought it from.
I don't expect to be able to do anything about this situation, but I want definitely restrictions in the future that keep someone from burying a house, because this particular guy, now instead of having a pea gravel crawl space, to his surprise, has to put in a cement bottomed crawl space with a fan in it, to prevent radon from coming up out of the ground into his house, which he acted totally surprised by the whole process of everything that's happened. So I just would like to prevent anything in the future.
And I'm not sure which committee would want to.
That happened on Smith Street, for those of you that don't know.
But I, he's not asking.
No, no, I understand.
For anything right now under these circumstances.
It's what brought about the conversation.
I would just hate to see it happen again, because now that pile's gonna be buried in the next lot next door.
How about you, Doc?
So anyway.
Double check with Mike, maybe tomorrow. Because I asked, because there again, I was off last week, so I don't know if anything's changed, but I'm gonna check.
Okay, all righty.
But are we just gonna, that's it, we're done? We're not gonna do anything about this?
Well.
Instead of have to go to like ordinance committee or something to consider what they wanna do.
The property ordinance.
Ordinance committee, Ron Jones, Eric Bassett and Sheila Baker, would you guys please address the situation?
Sure.
Thank you. Ron Jones, Eric Bassett, Sheila Baker.
Let me know.
Okay. We'll get moving on that. Anything else? All right. So then we go to the department heads, and the police chief told me he had a conflict of, conflict tonight wouldn't be here. Well, hear from Fire Chief Scott Kramer.
I don't have anything on the fire department side tonight, on the rescue EMS side tonight, should have a collection report in your pack up. And I would like a recommendation from the mayor that we hire Bobby Meyer as a full-time EMT.
I would make that recommendation, that we hire Bobby Meyer as a full-time EMT.
I would take the mayor's recommendation and turn it into a motion that we hire Bobby Meyer.
Second.
Roll call please. Barth?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Just so the community knows, this is our third full-time EMT, and we just are having such staffing problems these days with volunteers, that's kinda coming to this, but we still want volunteers, so if there's anybody out there that would like to become, or have any inclination to become an EMT, we would be glad to have you. Anything else, chief?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for him?
Is he gonna be on a different shift?
Yes.
Than what the other?
Yes.
Because.
I'd like a minute of your time right after this meeting, if I could, please.
The rescue squad billing report looks good.
Thank you.
Thanks Scott.
Thank you. And EMS chief Lonnie told me that she was not going to be able to make it tonight, and for park director, I don't see anyone here. That, we'll go to the fiscal officer's report, please.
You have your cash, month-to-date, year-to-date report, the June income tax report, the June revolving loan report, and also tonight I put on the desk of mayor's court report. And I wanted everybody to know if you want replacement pages for 2016 ordinances, they're in my office.
Thank you Cheryl.
Just how many copies do you give?
The same as, they just send them automatically, there's a whole box of them.
Anything else, or any questions for Cheryl? Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to call executive session for purchase of land, possible.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
Go into executive session for possible purchase of property. Roll call please. Oh, pardon me?
It was the second.
Um, Beverly. Baker?
Kat, did you have something you wanted to talk about?
I just came to listen to them.
Okay. Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for coming everyone, we'll be returning to regular session after we, after we have our executive session, if you'd like to wait in my office, did you unlock this room tonight? There's also chairs in the office right through these doors, you can wait.
Where we go, I have Mike Barth out there on Haven Drive today, he knows exactly what I'm gonna talk before, I don't even have to say nothing. Go ahead, tell him what you see out there.
Well, residents out there are concerned on the size of the ditches on their, on the, well, the third roadside, they're starting, oh, they pretty much got down to the end, they're starting on the, the other side of the road, they're pretty deep, and they have concerns. I talked to Pat on the phone today, I talked to Jeff Ruhoff, I talked to Dave, talked to Ken a little bit about it, I talked to Ron, and Mike's had their input. Cheryl, you know, quite a few people, they're concerned on how they're gonna maintain, mow, I'm, I'm concerned, those ditches are deep.
We don't really have ditches, they're gonna be canals.
Well, they're, they're deep. And I told you I would call Ken Kearns, and I did, and he's gonna call me at 10 o'clock tomorrow, when he gets out of a meeting. We wanna address how deep these ditches are, and before they go any further, I know you've talked to people about it, Ron's talked to people, Kent's talked to people, they're concerned. And I see their, I see their concerns.
I talked to the couple of workers out there today, and each of them says if that was their, if that was their neighborhood, they said they'd be totally against it, they said they would not even have that done, what's being done on Haven Drive, in fact, they said that for every individual that lives out there, they feel sorry for them, they feel for them really mad because of what's being taken, what's being done out there. They said there's nothing out there that's even being done right, like it shouldn't have been in the first place.
They're the ones doing it.
No.
They're the ones that Toronto said, whoever the engineer up here is the ones that also talked to them and told them to go ahead and do that.
And I told you Dave, when we were out there talking, that concerns me, because you hire a, a construction company at that amount of money, you hire an engineering firm at that amount of money to best fit the needs of the residents, the flooding, the sanitary issues, the water line issues, you know, and we go by the.
We can't at the first place, Toronto also turned on set also, that. Wouldn't it cost that much more money if they would've just ran the drain all the way down through the swells, where the swells have been, been a little swell, they had to run the lines, what do you call it, sad, not sad, but the sewer, or.
Storm mark.
Storm sewer lines down through there, each, they would tee them off, they could've had, each yard or every other yard could've had a thing down there, this is all the water that drained down there, and it ran out, instead of having the big old, old canal out there.
And I told you back when we made this decision, years ago, because the amount of water running down that slope towards the homes, because you've all had flooding issues and front row, back row, you know, and we had a long conversation on this, the amount of water running down through that area, the ditches were gonna hold the best water and move it away quicker. But I said I would get ahold of Ken, and Kent, and, you know, we have a committee, we have a council, and we, we discuss it.
But my personal take is they can't be that dangling deep. Crazy.
It's deep.
Yeah, also I guess they also said back here on Clearview Drive, that one house sits back here, next to the woods back here, I guess it's, they said back here, they says, go back and look at that one, I addressed that with you today too. I can't believe, I don't understand, I don't really know how big of an opening the pipe is back here, but he says actually they started by halfway back through the guy's yard, and I guess it's open. through the guy's yard, and I guess it's open. They said they got like four small kids back here, and it says, one of them's gonna wind up falling in there, and if they do, they're gonna drive.
Yeah, I haven't been back that far. I don't know, Jeff, have you been back in there?
Covered, it's nothing.
That needs some Mark's gonna-
Well, Mark's gonna start, and Mark's starting that.
Mark's just gonna fix-
Right.
After the fact, that's gonna be taken care of.
Right, but I didn't know if there was some type of-
Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna be taken after, after the fact, 'cause it's cheaper for us to do it after the fact than have them do it.
Well, I think they want something to cover the hole up until Mark gets out there, and so nobody falls into it, or something, or do some type of-
No, this was behind a funeral.
This is totally-
Like I said, if, if, to me, if a hole is that big where it's a definite hazard to neighborhood kids or anything, it should have some type of covering over it or something else. They do that with streets with metal, metal plates and everything else. If it's that kind of a hole, absolutely.
Like we also discussed with you today, also, like lighting out there, from where that road, where the road starts, ends, on the edge of the road, and where that swell's gonna start, there may be no place to even put a wall, or a tiny mailbox.
You know, I, I, I could told you, I called Jeff, he was on vacation last week, I talked to Jeff, and I talked to Kent, both on vacation, to, you know, take a look at this situation.
Is there some way we can get him in here and have the people come?
Those brought up today to have, to get, uh, once again, get all the residents on Haverdive Drive.
They would like to have another meeting.
Right.
You know, just for, I can't say that, just for crapping giggles, you could talk to me once in a while, 'cause I know how to do that stuff. I've got video on there of water boiling out of the ground that high, back in their yards, where Underground didn't even, they didn't even cut the tile off, they didn't seal them down, they didn't even put them into the ditch.
Was that the Turnbull line? Jim?
I don't know who lives there.
You seriously go down Haverdive Drive, when you get a good rain, and walk over there on the side of the road, the third row, you will see where the water is bubbling. Several residents there.
And I think somebody, I mean, it's been-
She's wanted to show us this, uh, this the other day with a rain. She's got one of theirs that's bubbling up out of her, filling her, she said now she, now she pretty much figures out why her ditch is always wet now, because she's got water, runs constantly into the thing, whatever, runs in there. Just keeps the swampy.
And this was something everybody was aware of years back already, and never reached a solution on what you're gonna do. Can we just go in, well, it's gonna be out of the right of way, can, I was gonna say, it's in your yard.
We don't have one individual fix his tile, his tile on his field, right? Almost 50 residents out there's gonna have to pay for it by being that swell done about twice as deep as what it should be.
All I was saying was council never did figure out, were we gonna go and cut these off and not worry about the property owner, the field property owner? Is it up to the property owners to deal with the farm property owner? It was never part of the project for Underground to go out of the right of way to cut off field tiles. I mean, this was something that's just never been addressed for years.
Never been finished.
Gotta pop up and, uh, so. 'Cause we talked about putting a storm sewer in.
Well, we, we may touch on that, not that, but in discussion of, of purchasing property in the executive session, there's a small lead into that, that I think you will all find interesting.
Well, I wish David was stuck around, I guess, so I can get word to him. We have found, though, there's still stuff coming into that brand-new sanitary sewer that we've gotta get out somehow, and there again, we gotta address. And I'll guess use Pat for example, since he's sitting there. I'm, I'm not saying you, that you've done it. Say she's the one that's got her downspouts tied in, and she's got a tile leading from that field, you know, so she's running all that water into that brand-new sanitary sewer that we don't want. Now, do we go in and cut her off and this and that, or you send her a letter saying you got six months to do it, or we're gonna come do it? Or, and there again, I think that was something that's been addressed for years that just-
I thought you had an ordinance, there was no doubt.
Yeah, I thought we had one.
They could not do that.
Well, but we don't enforce that anywhere else.
Well-
Well, we don't.
Gotta start somewhere.
And every time that got to the ready, set, go- The reason we didn't enforce it is because you can't enforce it. You can't tell somebody that they can't have this, this, their sump pumps and to keep their basements dry and stuff, you can't tell them they can't have that if we don't have a storm sewer someplace readily available to them. They've got a brand-new storm sewer. Well, but what I'm saying is, we never addressed anything as far as, is it up to the property owner, or is the village going to do it? I mean, it's-
If, if it's a farm tile tied into their lateral somehow.
Well, yeah, that's just-
That's the issue, right?
Yeah.
You going to the farmer, the-
You just give the farmer notice and, and say, hey, if it's not, you know, we gotta have a meeting, if it's not addressed by not six months, I'm, you know, 30 days, 30 days or whatever, and then if they don't do it, then they've been on notice and cut it and cap it.
And we've not been out there yet with our lateral camera, just 'cause we don't wanna be in the way of everything else going on.
Right.
One of the days is when we can get in out there, but the list EMHT gave us, a shorter list would be the houses that don't have any intrusion. Just about every connection out there, we're gonna have to run up in that lateral and see if it goes beyond where people tie in, and then you're gonna have to deal with how you're getting rid of all that.
We did the same thing on our farm field tile by the industrial park probably five years ago. Sent a letter, had a meeting, wasn't a pleasant meeting, but it got taken care of.
Ken, what do we gotta do to get that started?
Yeah, figure out whose farmer, what farmer's got his tile tied in there and-
Does anybody know?
Is it all coming from the field?
Yeah, I mean, it's all across the street, I mean, on third row. We can talk about this.
But I have addressed Pat. I told you I was gonna call Pat, you know, I talked to the mayor about this, and I went out and talked to Dave, and, you know, I wanna get ahold of Kent and say, I remember when they were talking about this whole project, it was gonna be smooth and feathered out. This is straight down, this is a concern. It's a mowing concern, it's an upkeep concern.
It's a safety concern.
Yeah.
And, and a safety concern, and where they're gonna put the lights, when Pat addressed that, and they've had mailbox issues because they're on the side of the road.
Are you gonna then call a neighborhood meeting, a Haverdive Drive meeting?
Yeah, I would love to do, you know, council, EMHT, and, and the residents, or committee and the residents, that's the engineers.
You better just put a storm in and solve the problem. It is a nightmare.
Be the best way to do it, that we, they can answer your question, tell you how great it'll be on it.
But I'm reminding people, when they said in the beginning, a, a pipe underground like that, with the amount of water coming in through that, it wasn't gonna move the water, handle that water, and get it to the creek on, on the downstream. That's why we pushed towards the, the open ditch, but not that kind of open ditch.
Okay.
Ron made a move, and I second it.
We did roll call already.
Did you?
Yeah.
Why aren't we doing?
Well, we got off track, so we're gonna go ahead and go into executive session. Now, if you'd like to wait around, there's a room over there.
Coming back.
You can go wait, Dan.